All right, here with Kevin Schofield, SCCinsight.com. How are you, Kevin?
I'm good. How are you?
Man, I'm all right. And, you know, I was trying to explain exactly what city council is doing or not doing here, especially around this issue of defund, which is one of the key issues that has people in the streets and protesting here in Seattle. And I thought there's no better person that to turn to than the wordy and nerdy Kevin Schofield, so we could try to figure this thing out.
And I'm going to be my wordiest and nerdiest today on this because we're going to do a little bit of budget school here to really kind of understand. This is, you know, I've done a lot of budgeting over a lot of years, and this is a really, really super complicated one that I've gotten wrong a number of cases just in the last week trying to sort this all out. And, but, you know, what's been happening is it's been a really up and down year for SPD, just in terms of what they've been able to hire and the number of people that they've lost through attrition. And so just trying to pinpoint where are they going to end this year? What does it look like going into next year is hard enough. But then from there, the city council has been trying to figure out, well, you know, given we're at the start of this process of, you know, trying to build up community led replacements to SPD, you know, do we want to start shrinking them now? Or wait till we have a plan and, you know, the organization's in place to pick up the slack from them? And, you know, it gets into tougher questions like if they do have higher attrition, do we want them to be able even to hire back to that attrition so they can maintain where they are for 911 response? You know, how long it takes to get somebody out to your house if you call 911? Or, you know, the specialty and investigative groups looking at things like domestic violence and other things. If they leave people from those groups, should they be able to hire back from them? So it's been just tough and it's been lots of numbers thrown around. But, you know, where it looks like is if last minute thing by the city council gets passed tomorrow, then SPD's staffing going through next year will probably be just about the same as it is next year. You know, unless the city council comes in the middle of the year and says, okay, we're ready to go and we'll kind of go faster from there.
All right. And I know we got a lot of stuff lined up to talk about, but Kevin, what you just said is that SPD staffing next year will look a lot like this year. We've also got city council members now kind of recanting their statements saying like, oh, I never said 50%. I never said this and that. I mean, from your side, on the numbers side and watching the city council over the last few months, I mean, what's your observation?
Yeah. So I think they really got out ahead of themselves at the beginning that, you know, in the heat of the moment, last early June, when the, when the, you know, the rallying cries came out for defund by 50%, there, I think there are a lot of city council members that felt immediate pressure to respond to that. And, you know, as we know, a majority of them committed to, you know, 50% cut. And then when they sat down and ran the numbers and looked at what's going on in the department and looked at, you know, what they had in terms of a plan or what they would need in terms of a plan and how long, you know, it would take to actually execute a plan, they realized, wow, that's totally not going to happen this year. And, and since then, they've been, you know, trying to walk it back. And, you know, with, you know, not great success in walking it back. So it gets to the end of the year now, and they certainly haven't cut it back 50% in 2020. And what they seem to be saying now is we're not done, right? We're, we, we're going to move some of the civilian led groups out of SPD in 2021, like the 911 call center and the parking enforcement officers. And maybe they get the, the community service officers. And then, you know, we're going to put a bunch of money into community led investments in alternative forms of community safety. And our hope is when those really spin up, we will be able to decrease SPD more. But in the, in the short term beyond that, we're not going to push really hard for drastic cuts until we have the thing in place that's going to replace it. That seems to be what they're saying. And the budget that they see, that seemed like they're poised to pass tomorrow, you know, is fairly consistent with that message.
All right. Well, this is good for the summary, but you know, we bring you on here to dig deep into the, into the numbers and to what's going on. Let's start here with a few concepts because I know that you're going to be talking about all these acronyms of what is what and everything else. Let's dive into that first.
Start a little budget school? Yeah. Okay. So, um, you know, a budget for a big organization and, you know, I worked in one, you know, in the corporate world for a number of years. Even just like the staffing budget, you think of it as like a one number, it's not, it's actually a bunch of numbers. And, you know, there, there are a couple of main ones that, that it talked to, and SPD has its own kind of twist on that that we will, you know, get into a little bit too. The first number you hear thrown around a lot is, you know, what they call position authority, which says, what's a total number of people that you're allowed to hire? Right? Ever, you know, you can't ever go above that number of people, right? And there's a number for that for SPD. It's, you know, it's kind of artificially high and it really doesn't matter, right? Because at the end of the day, that isn't going to drive, that isn't driving any of the conversations around what we're doing here. The, the number that's really more meaningful here in terms of the budgeting part of this is how much money they have to pay people, right? They can, you know, they can have officially the authority to hire 5,000 people, but if they can only pay 1,400 of them, then, you know, that, that's really going to be the practical limit to how many people that they can, they can hire, right? So that number is what's called, you know, funded FTEs or, or, you know, funded, you know, full time employees. Sometimes they call it full time equivalents because sometimes you can have like two half time employees and they call that the equivalent. But let's just call it FTEs, right? And what this means is, you know, uh, this is, uh, the number of people you can pay. And they do this because, you know, over the course of a year, the number of people that you have in your staff could change. The way they actually calculate this is the average of the number of people that you have in your organization over the course of the year, right? Now, if, you know, SPD's total number of officers is steady all year, say 1,400, then calculating this is really easy. It's like 1,400 times the average salary, boom, you got your dollar budget for the number of people you have to hire. But it's not, right? It isn't steady over the course of the year. And if it starts out at, you know, 1320 and it goes up a bit from there, right? Then if you, you know, the only number you know for sure is the number you start the year at. We know about how many people SPD is going to start the year at, right? But if it goes up from there, but they budgeted based on the starting number, then they're not going to have enough money to pay everybody by the end of the year, right? They're going to run out. Or the opposite is also true. If, you know, the number starts out high and then through attrition, it goes down, you get to the end of the year and they've got too much money, right? They've got a bunch of money sitting in the bank account that they haven't spent spending people, uh, paying people that the city could have spent on other things like more community led investments in, in, in community safety programs, right? So getting this number right turns out to be really important. This is a lot of what the city council has spent its time on over the last, you know, both in the summer, you know, budgeting, you know, special budgets, some use than they did. And also this fall is trying to figure out what do we fund them for funded FTEs, right? But now kind of, there are a couple of interesting numbers that are really more operational for, for SPD below that. One is what they call fully trained officers, right? And that's the number of officers who've gone through training and can be assigned to active duty. Because, um, you know, the, the, the interesting thing about when SPD hires people is their hiring pipeline is about a year, right? They have to go recruit a bunch of people, then they run on the street, this whole battery of tests, you know, physical tests and written tests to make sure that they could, you know, actually succeed as officers. And then they go through several months of training and while they're actually in training, they're getting paid, not as much as full time, you know, as, as, you know, on duty officers. But they're still getting paid something for doing that, right? So they have to budget some money for doing that. That's all in that funded FTEs. But the number of fully trained officers that have gone all the way through that program and could actually be assigned, you know, a shift is lower than that. And then there's a number which is lower than that even, which is officers in service, which says, hey, you know, if all of our fully trained officers, some are, you know, on leave for military duty, some are on medical leave or parental leave, or, you know, a whole bunch of different things. So the number, you know, of fully trained officers, we could actually assign a shift is lower than that. And so from the budget point of view, from, you know, the city council looking at it, really, they mostly just care about the funded FTEs number. But for interim chief Diaz trying to figure out, how do I staff my department? And how do I make sure that 911 calls get answered quickly and all that? He cares about all these other numbers too, right? Making sure that he knows how many officers there are, how many there are in the pipeline. And, and, you know, how many officers are really in service that I could actually, you know, schedule into shifts for this, right? So that's kind of the start of our budgets, budget school here.
Right. And when people talk about a hiring freeze, maybe you can give us, what it does, it means, it probably means that it is the same thing, but it, it kind of means something different to different people. So maybe you could break it down.
Yeah. So, so, um, so, and this is, this is something that's really interesting when it comes to, you know, thinking about the different roles that kind of the legislative branch, the city council versus the executive branch, the mayor and SPD is part of that. Have, you know, we have this, we have, you know, separation, separation of powers in our government, right? So what the city council gets to do is they get to set the budget. They get to say what this funded FTEs number is, right? But a hiring freeze would be saying, um, that if somebody left SPD, would SPD be able to actually hire a replacement for that person, right? Or are they forever from that point on, just have one person less on their staff, right? And, um, you know, one of the interesting questions around this is, well, sorry, let me back up a second. So what the city council can definitely do is say, you know, when they get that funded FTEs number, they can, they can say, here's, here's the amount of money you have to pay people, right? But there's this whole question of can the city council actually tell SPD, you have a hiring freeze, right? So if somebody leaves, even though you may still have enough money to pay, you know, a replacement, you don't get to hire a replacement. And it's not at all clear just legally from a point, you know, from the legal point of view, that the city council has the authority to put a hiring freeze on SPD, right? Because that's in a different branch of government, right? The mayor can definitely impose one. The chief of police can impose one on SPD. But it's not clear that the city council can do that. They can say, here's how much money you have. And they can go back anytime over the course of the year and change the amount of money that SPD has, right? So they can try to micromanage it that way, but they can't necessarily say, you know, there's a hiring freeze. I can't hear you, but are you on mute?
Can the chief of police, if, if the chief wanted to pay officers less and get more officers, or is that like?
That's a contractual thing, right? There, there, there are pay rates that are, that are specified in the SPOG contract. That say, here's how much you pay somebody at this level and with this many years of service, right? So, and so contractually, they have to follow that. And that all gets figured into kind of how they, they come up with the, you know, the amount of money for, for funded FTEs, right? So, um, uh, so, you know, we can, uh, put up a graph here and show you, this is one of the things that, you know, here's a graph that, uh, the, the city council has been kind of working with on trying to figure out, you know, with their own staff on, you know, how, how many, you know, fully trained officers are there going to be? And how much, you know, they have to fund for fully, uh, for FTEs so that, you know, SPD can be where they want to go. So, you know, this is my closest reproduction I could of a graph that was in one of the memos that, that the city council has been using for their planning on SPD's budget. And I just want to stop for a moment and say, I hate this graph. And I'm going to show you, put the graph back up. I'm going to show you why. If you go, the first thing, whenever somebody puts a graph like this up, the first thing you want to do is look in the bottom left corner, right? Where you see that number 1,200 and for the, kind of the scale of the vertical axis. That number should always be zero. If that number isn't zero, then somebody's changing the scale of this chart to try to persuade you of something. In fact, almost always to exaggerate the scale of changes that are being made, right? So now, because this doesn't start at zero, it starts at 1,200, little changes suddenly look like they're really, really big. So if you switch to the, you know, I redid this graph to one where, where I fixed that. So if you, right, this is a fixed version, right? All the same numbers, except now if you go look in the bottom left corner, it's zero. And suddenly it looks really different. And suddenly you see, you know, what, what we see in this graph is up until 2020, and that number 1,295 is where SPD is going to end this year for a number of fully trained officers. If they put a hiring freeze in place, then next year, SPD, without being able to hire anybody and still having attrition will be down to 1,260, right? Without it, at what they're looking at right now, and this is one of the funny things about SPD's, um, the way they hire. Because like I talked about before, they have this basically one year pipeline for hiring. They know how many people are going to come on board next year, right? Because they're all in the pipeline right now. They know they've got about 114 people and they're, uh, that are in the pipeline, they could hire next year. And they know that their projection based on past years is they think they'll have attrition about 89. They could be way wrong. It could be lower than that, it could be higher, but their first guess is about 89. Which means if they go forward like that, they're going to add about 25 people next year. That doesn't, that doesn't all translate down to fully trained officers because of, you know, a bunch of other issues. But, um, so that would be a slight increase over where they're going to end this year by the end of next year, not a big one. And if we go back to the chart, you'll see, you know, in the, in the, in the city council's version of it, it looks like a big change next year. But really, we're talking small ball here, right? This, the entire argument that's really been, you know, raging over the last few days about hiring freeze, no hiring freeze. At the end of the day, doesn't make a lot of difference, especially for next year. We're talking about really, really small changes here about this. But, you know, I guess there is still a larger principle about, do we, you know, at this point forward, until we get this all sorted out about, you know, the new ver, you know, a new version of SPD and more community led alternatives, do we ever want to let SPD hire somebody again? And that's a complicated issue. And it comes back to one more aspect of what is the city council's role here in terms of SPD hiring? Because, and this is something we've seen play out over the last couple of months. One of the things the city council definitely cannot do is tell chief Diaz how he gets to deploy the officers that he has. How many go on patrol? How many go into specialty or investigative units? And we already saw, you know, back in September, chief Diaz said, hey, I'm worried about 911 response time. So I'm going to move 100 people out of specialty and investigative units into patrol so I can keep that number low, right? And the city council can't micromanage that decision. But under the city charter, that is chief Diaz, chief Diaz's responsibility. But that doesn't mean that chief Diaz has any control over where the attrition is going to come from, right? Who's going to leave? There could be people leaving from, from patrol. It could be leaving from specialty units. So if you put a blanket hiring freeze on SPD, then you're also removing the chief's ability to say, hey, I really want to make sure we've got patrol staffed up, right? Or it could be saying, hey, I really want to make sure that the domestic violence investigative unit is fully staffed up, right? And the city council doesn't get to micromanage that. So putting a hiring freeze on has these big repercussions that are really beyond the kind of thing that, that, that even the city council can kind of directly micromanage what the impacts of that are going to be, right? Does that make sense?
No, I mean, it, it does. And so what, what is the city council doing? And I, I think it was important, and I just want to reiterate on this, this is something that we, that was discussed back during, um, CHAS, CHOP, some of everything else is city council's ability to impact the chief of police as well as the mayor's ability to impact the chief of police because it comes down to the city charter and what's in the charter.
Yeah. Can we, can we put up the other table that, that I gave you here?
Sure.
Yeah. So this is another one from one of the city council's memos, kind of looking at, you'll see the, you know, left column, we got funded FTEs. That's the number thing we talked about. Uh, that's the thing we talked about before, about how much money do they have? And, and how many people that they can actually pay? You see in the far right, sort of what that translates to in terms of fully trained. In the middle, kind of their estimates over the years between, you know, number of new hires they've had, number of, you know, people who've left and what that means in terms of kind of growth or, you know, or decreases in the size. And then kind of if you flip to the next version, we're going to look really close at two lines here, which are really, really important to this. Yeah. So these two lines. So, um, originally the plan was, you know, for, for 2020, that SPD is going to be able to fund 1,497 officers. But, you know, in the middle of the year, that, you know, back over the summer, uh, the city council started cutting that back. And then based upon, you know, their, their estimates for the end of the year now, they're, you know, based upon what city council, the money they've taken away and where they've ended up with attrition, SPD is going to end up with fully funding for about 1422. And, and the number of fully trained officers they're going to have is 1,295. And we just saw that kind of on that other graph, right? So what the mayor proposed for next year said, originally she said, I want 1,450, 1,450 funded FTEs, but realistically, you know, looking at our, our hiring plan and the number of people we got in the pipeline and expected attrition, really, we're only going to be able to actually fund, uh, you know, pay 1,400 people. So the first thing the city council did is they said, okay, fine. If, you know, if, if, if you're not going to get to 1,450, you're only going to get to 1,400, we're going to take that other 50 back, right? We're just boom, going to take that off the table. We're going to take that back. But, uh, you know, but we want to do more than that. And so, uh, let's do, go to that one last graphic I get here, which is SPD. Yeah, that one. Perfect. So kind of if you look at the top, top part here, the blue part is funded FTEs. The bottom part is looking at what it means for fully trained officers and how many people chief Diaz is going to be, have to work with. Mayor proposed 1,450. Realistically, it was only 1,400. The council, in what they've done so far in their budget up to, you know, last Friday, said, we're going to cut that down to 1322, right? And what that would mean, we look at the bottom is without a hiring freeze, they, they're not putting in place a hiring freeze. And without that hiring freeze, it means that fully trained officers could go from 1,295 to the end of this year, back up to about 1311, right? But they've got one more trick up their sleeve for, uh, for this Monday, uh, meeting they've got coming up. They've got one last budget amendment that they want to sneak in there that would cut another 14 funded FTEs. And would, would, you know, it's never quite sure exactly how that translates into fully trained officers because, you know, it depends on who comes and who leaves and whether people bail out from the, you know, the training process. But they estimate they would put it around 1286. So what that would do, if they do this one, and it's about $2 million they'd be taking out. They'd take that $2 million, they'd add it to the amount that they're putting into community led public safety investments. And it would make sure that SPD doesn't grow back even a little bit next year. They would basically be flat from where they are at the end of this year through next year.
All right. So a few questions here, Kevin.
You bet.
And, and yeah, thank you for this breakdown and, um, because, you know, people actually really like to see the in-depth of it. And this is why.
I wanted to understand this too. I'm like, I don't know, you know, this is complicated. I don't know what these guys are doing. What do the numbers really say about this stuff? So.
So I want you to put your hat on. Um, I keep a hat over here. Ah, there it is. Voila. So I want, I want you to put your hat on and your, your, your first hat is, is if you're from the defund movement, if you're from the Krep, Key County Equity Now, Nikita Oliver, and you know what they're pushing for, what does this mean?
This means it's definitely not going to happen in 2021. And one of the things that the city council members have said over and over again, over the last few weeks, as they've been working on this budget is, we're not done, right? They, they move back from the, we're going to defund by 50% right away. And at least a majority of them have, council member Sawant has, is still in the, in the camp of let's defund them by 50% right away. She put last week, she put through a budget amendment, you know, to try to make that happen. And, you know, nobody, not even council member Morales got on board with her on that, right? She was really alone on that. But what they seem to be saying is, we're not done. Um, you know, we, uh, we're, we're working to a plan and not a percentage. That's something that council member Juarez has said over and over again. And, and other council members seem to be kind of on board with that, with the spirit of that now saying, let's, you know, put a bunch of money and literally it's tens of millions of dollars in 2021 into community led public safety investments. Let's get them spun up. Let's get them up to scale. And then we will work on doing further cuts to SPD when we can actually move responsibility for functions and responses to different kinds of 911 calls over to these other civilian, community led, private organizations that can, that can, you know, really take up the slack for this kind of stuff. And they don't have a specific timeline other than they're hoping their participatory budgeting process will come up with very specific recommendations before they start the 2022 budget process next fall.
All right. And now if you're the city council, we've got the same cap on, but, uh, maybe a different logo. There you go.
I got all the caps today. Yeah.
What, what, what does this mean?
Oh, for the city council, um, you know, they've clawed back a bunch of money from SPD, right? They've really, I think, I, my guess is they feel pretty good about the fact that, um, they're, uh, you know, they've, they've injected a bunch of realism into SPD that their, their budget has been loose for a number of years. Like, you know, we just talked about even, you know, their, their, their position authority number and the amount of money they had for funded positions was, you know, way above what they ever realistically could hire to, right? And, and that gave them, you know, a lot of slop in their budget that they could use for things like overtime. And, and, you know, and some of the overtime was well managed and a lot of the overtime was not well managed. So that was, but, you know, that SPD has never really spent like a, you know, huge amount of money on equipment or, you know, militarizing or anything like that. You know, they spent some money on that, but it's, you know, it's nothing. It's a tiny little fraction. It's almost a rounding error compared to what they spent on payroll, right? On the people expenses. That's almost the entire SPD budget. So at the end of the day, you know, if you want to cut SPD's budget, you have to cut people, right? So the other thing for SPD, uh, for the city council on this is, you know, they, part of their plan is, you know, they've told SPD to lay off 35 people. And, and do that, you know, in some ways, sort of as a test case for figuring out if they can lay off people, what they call out of order, to make sure that, um, that they can, uh, you know, get people out of the force who have a long track record of excessive use of force, but also to make sure that they can retain people that add diversity to the department. You know, at the end of the day, if the attrition level stays high, then, um, SPD may meet that target with the layoffs without ever actually having to lay off somebody, right? Just because they've lost enough people that they hit that target number, you know, anyway. But, um, you know, I think SPD really, and, and the mayor actually seems to be kind of on board for this now, really wants to test out the process of out of order layoffs to see, it's a legally untested process. They think they know on paper how it works, but they've never really seen, you know, can they run the gauntlet of the public safety civil service commission and really get them to approve this, right? And, you know, will the, will the, uh, will SPOG sue, right? To try to stop it. And then what will the courts say, right? So they've got a tiny test case of like 35 layoffs to see if they can run that gauntlet and see how it turns out at the end. And that will probably take a year to year and a half, quite honestly, to run it, to run the gauntlet of that all, all the way through.
Right. And the last, I don't know if you have one more hat there or not, but the, the last question.
No, no, that's it for me. I'll just switch back to the other one. I like it better anyway.
Voila. The Samaritan, you should like that one better. The last one is if you're the mayor, what does this look like to you? And are you ready to fight on this or, or veto or anything else?
Yeah. So, you know, the mayor, the mayor seems to be okay with them. Um, and I, I think there are a lot of things that the city council could have done that the mayor would probably be upset about. And the end, at the end of the day, you know, the mayor, at least her words have echoed some of the things that the city council seems to have come around about now. Like, you know, she has said in principle, I'm not opposed to, in fact, in a lot of ways, she's in favor of, you know, spinning up community led alternatives and, you know, over time, you know, spinning down SPD or at least parts of it. But, um, again, I think she really wanted to see a plan and not just, you know, cut to 50%. And she seems to be getting her way on that now. So she seems pretty happy if the council had come through and, uh, you know, tried to do, at the end of the day, the, you know, the, the budgetary cuts SPD are going to be on the range of about somewhere between 17 and 20% this year. If the council had come in and said, we're going to cut it 30% or 40%, uh, and, you know, it resulted in, uh, a lot fewer officers, without really a plan for how they're going to, you know, what that meant for 911 response, what that meant for the investigative units. And, you know, thinking about priorities for all that, I, I think she would have been really upset about that and would be thinking hard about vetoing it. But at this point, she's largely signaling her support for, for, for this budget. I don't think anybody expects her to veto it. And there's nothing, there's nothing in this budget around SPD that she's signaled such discontent with that, that she is going to, you know, uh, veto it. The cuts they've largely made, most of them, you know, um, to the officer side of SPD, it has largely been a recognition that SPD wasn't going to use that money anyway, right? Where they are with attrition, with the higher attrition they've seen this year and what they think they can hire next year with their long pipeline, just means they're, they're just not going to spend that money. So there's, it's hard to come up with an argument for why SPD should keep that money when they're not going to spend it.
All right, Kevin. And one last thing, we started this conversation with this. And I'm not trying to get you jammed up here, but I'll throw this out. Like the city council, a lot of my conversations with council, and I know you work with council. And as a matter of fact, the, the name of your website is Seattle City Council, SCCinsight.com. But if somebody has been out there on the streets and somebody who's, who, who's really, you know, man, walked the walk literally and, and been with these protesters, these marchers and everything else. I get a sense after this conversation, and we'll put these sense to the side. There's SPD, there's, you know, city councils, the mayor, everything else. But it seems like city council, there's some city council members like Juarez. But it, it seems like city council, there's some city council members like Juarez, who from day one was like, hey, you know what? I'm kind of for this defund, but I want a plan and not a percentage. There's the mayor Durkin, who was kind of like, you know what, I'm not for cutting public safety. They've stood their ground for the most part, you know, this whole time. There's Sawant as well, who Sawant has been consistent, whether you like Sawant or don't like Sawant. Sawant has been consistent through this. Kevin Schofield, the city council members that have got on the roller coaster and taken the citizen stakeholders of Seattle up and down this roller coaster with them. I mean, what's this all about?
You know, we have a lot of new city council members, right? And, and this was, I wish I could say this is their first big crisis. There were second big crises, the first one being COVID, when it hit in, in, in February. But this is the one, the first one where they really had to face people, you know, face to face on, on, on this. And the one that really, you know, the, you know, we have to remember last year, a, a, a lot of these new city council members ran on very progressive platforms, right? Uh, against more moderate candidates. And they got elected on those progressive platforms. And I think this was really the first big test of, are they going to walk the walk of the progressive platform? And they, and in the heat of the moment, after, uh, the murder of George Floyd, when there were protests every night and they were starting to get violent and SPD was, um, responding with violence. And they were responding, you know, very poorly to protests against the police. I, I think a lot of city council members felt the need to say something. And, um, you know, I think some of them would privately also admit that they got ahead of themselves, right? They, they, maybe in part because, you know, many of them are new and in part just because they were really trying to be, you know, in, in all earnestness, responsive to their constituents, said what they thought was the right thing before they really understood the implications of it. And now the, the implications, and when the implications were clear, they had to walk it back. And, and that's never a comfortable thing to do. And particularly in a situation like this where, you know, where emotions and tensions are so high around it. Uh, and people's lives are on the line, right? Literally people's lives are on the, you know, black, I, I don't have to tell you, like, black people are dying at the, at the hands of the police, right? And that, that, you know, that weighs very heavily on these city council members. They want to do something about that. And, and, um, and again, I just think they got ahead of themselves and, and said more than they should have said and made commitments that they, that they couldn't actually live with.
There it is. Well, um, so, so next steps, just tell us real quick. So the city council will vote on Monday and then what?
So there's, there's, there's two meetings tomorrow. In the morning, Monday morning, they have the last budget committee meeting. And normally what that happens, there is they, you know, they passed 160, or they went through 169 amendments last Wednesday and Thursday. Then they let their staff all like have three days and over the weekend to tie all that up, find, you know, oops, all, here's a little technical amendments we need to make to make everything pretty, tie a bow around it. And then they, uh, uh, tomorrow morning, they will pass a couple of technical amendments just to, you know, fix up a couple of loose ends. They will debate this one last minute change to SPD staffing that's on their agenda for tomorrow. They're going to pass that a committee. And then tomorrow afternoon, at the full city council meeting, they will vote on final approval for the budget. And then it goes to the mayor.
Oh, no sense. Then it goes to the mayor. And your expectation is?
My expectation is, uh, they will probably pass this one last minute thing on SPD, uh, uh, budget. They'll pass it out of committee, you know, there'll be lots and lots of long speeches. Tomorrow afternoon, the council will pass the, will give final approval of the budget by an eight to one vote with Sawant doing a protest vote as she's done every year for many, many years. And then the mayor will sign up. That's my prediction.
And life goes on.
And then, and then we have a funded, uh, city budget for 2021.
Wow.
Till the next crisis hits.
Well, I'll tell you, so, so two things I want to throw out before we go is that even with COVID though, you're right, the city council faced a crisis. But the mayor, um, used her executive powers. And so a lot of, a lot of the stuff around COVID, the, the city council was there, but the mayor was able to supersede because she was able to use her executive powers on a lot of things. And so this very well might be, uh, the first crisis, although you said it was the second one. It might, it might be the first crisis that really involves them voting on this, voting on that and everything else. But I, I would just say, before we log off here, Kevin, as, um, man, as somebody who's, who's been on the ground since May and, um, seen all this stuff transform. And, I mean, everybody appreciates 100%. People, people appreciate, like, whether, like, you know, the thing is like with Juarez, whether you agree with Juarez or not, Juarez just put it out there, like, hey, you know what? I'm, I'm not really, uh, I'm, I'm all for the, the, the concept of defund, but I want a percentage. I mean, I want a plan and not a percentage. Then you got other people who just weren't, weren't for it. And then, you know what I'm saying, you had Sawant, who was all the way even to, to the far left of it. But man, these, these council members, because the thing is, is like, they're not just playing with themselves or their office or whatever. They're playing with the constituents. And, you know, they had, clearly they had their constituents that they went home to after they went out and made these promises and pledges and they talked to them. But you know, it's a lot of young people out there in the streets. It's a lot of young idealistic people. And, you know, the, the, the city council, and whether people believe what the, the, the defund kids in the street believe or not, the, the fact that the city council sat there and actually acted like they were giving light to a movement. You know, I mean, it's like, I'm not really expecting you to break down anything. I'm just sharing my thoughts with you that it's, people just need to always keep it real. And, and, and sometimes the best thing that we can do is tell people things that they don't want to hear. You know, things, things that they might not want to hear or their position or whatever. I mean, because it's crazy, because like after this, you kind of know that, well, if you make a deal with Juarez, she's going to keep it. Because through all this, she, you know, she stood by her word. Can somebody really say that about some of these other council members?
Yeah, no, it's a great point. And, you know, I think it's important to, to keep in mind, you know, how we set our expectations for politicians, right? You know, state, state legislators, uh, you know, members of Congress, uh, they, you know, most of them, you know, have served as elected officials at the local or county level first, right? So they've, they've had some experience. They've been, probably all been burned a few times. And, but, you know, and been through the wringer a lot of times, but they learned a lot of lessons from this, right? City council, you know, this is a starting place for a lot of elected officials, right? And they come in with little or no experience on this, on this stuff. And, 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 you know, and they're learning on the job, right? This is on the job training for them is, is, as scary as that sounds sometimes, right? So.
2020, 2020 is a hell of a year to learn on the job, my friend.
And, and, I mean, one of the things that, you know, I remark from times I'm just thinking about, I have great sympathy for the city council, particularly the newest members. Because, you know, think about when we went, all went on COVID lockdown, right? You know, all the new city council members came in the beginning of January, hired new staff, right? And then within a month, we went on lockdown. And, uh, and suddenly, and everybody's been working from home since then, right? So think about all this stuff you get done with hallway conversations, right? You know, or, you know, think about all the problems that people, you know, under staff or converge solve just by like leaning over the next, the desk next to them and talking to a person or just running into each other as they're getting a cup of coffee or something. And they just work out problems by doing that, right? City council hasn't had a chance to do that this year. They don't run into each other's staff or run into each other in the hallway or in the, the coffee break room or down at the coffee stand. They don't run into the mayor's staff at the coffee stand, right? But, you know, that's how organizations get stuff done. It's not in the formal meetings, right? It's in all the informal ones. And they've been at this huge disadvantage all this year because they haven't had that, right? So, you know, we, I think we have to give them a little bit of a, of slack, right? I mean, you think about, you know, just ask the question, like, when they went out there and they made these commitments to defunding by 50%. If they and their staff had had 48 hours of hallway and coffee break room conversations before that, where, you know, they say, I, you know, I really feel like I need to go out and make this commitment to this. And people said, you know, Juarez said, hey, really, like, have you thought about what that means? Or, you know, even their own staff had just said like, like, hey, really, think, think, you know, it might've come out very differently, but they just didn't have that chance because we've all been living this, you know, COVID sheltered life, right? And, and it hurts us in ways that, uh, it just, our ability to do the right thing in, in ways that aren't necessarily obvious right away. So I do have some sympathy for the city council members and their staff as they've gone through this just brutal year for everybody.
I'm glad you gave that perspective. Um, and, and it is true, you know what I'm saying, COVID has impacted everything. But we shall see because, you know, the, the people that are in the streets, we know that, um, they're not necessarily happy. Um, and we'll, we'll see how it plays out. But Kevin Schofield, as usual, man, thank you for taking the time to dig deep being here. You know, our, our viewers definitely appreciate it. People appreciate the information. And we'll be following up with you and to see what the fallout is.
Yep. Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it.